Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 16th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council coming to order at 6:05 PM. We have a local.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Aaron Weaver.
Here. The flags flew tonight. I'll be led by Councilmember Quintero, invocation by Skip Lindeman, Lock, Cunyada Congregational Church, please stand.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for the chance to do the people's business. Help us to be fair, respectful, and honest in all our doings. Thank you also for calling us to public service. Let us be worthy of the trust that has been placed in us. And thank you, God, for all your blessings, including being able to live in this wonderful city. Amen.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Agenda for the July 16th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, July 11th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Your presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of July 23rd, 2013.
Mr. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for July 23rd, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, we do, however, at 3:00 PM, have a Glendale City Council and Successor Agency meeting. We have one item, Director of Economic Development. This is authorization for the issuance and sale of 2013 tax allocation refunding bonds to refinance outstanding bonds. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have two items under renewal of support and subscription services for the FileNet Enterprise Content Management System and renewal of annual support for the city's geographic information system. The Acting Director of Public Works, we have specialized miscellaneous parts and labor for the city-owned refuse trucks, bin hustlers, and Perkins rotary tipper. Acting Director of Public Works, destruction of certain city records in the Public Works Maintenance Services Division. We do have adoption of ordinances, ordinance amending certain titles of the GMC related to miscellaneous revisions and minor cleanups. That will be covered with you this evening. Under action items, we have Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding the design approval for Glendale's 2014 Rose float entry. Acting Director of Public Works, upgrade to the city's faster win fleet management software and faster web fleet management software systems. Acting Director of Public Works, specialized miscellaneous parts and labor for, this is, I'm sorry, listed twice. City Manager, designation of a voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. City Manager, this is consideration and discussion of proposed 2013-14 legislative platform. And City Manager, this is award of contract for our federal legislative advocacy services for fiscal year 1314. And lastly, under hearings, we have Acting Director of Public Works. This is regarding vacation of the first public alley west of Brand Boulevard, north of Palmer, and easterly portion of First Alley north of Palmer and Brand Boulevard, and it's vacation case number 171B. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
3B is a proclamation designating the month of July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, and let me make this statement. When we finish all the proclamations, you can all feel free to stand up and quietly leave the chambers and go have some fun while we do the business of the city. Your option. With that, Mr. Durant, shall I read the proclamation first?
Sure.
Thank you. Whereas throughout the city of Glendale, we are fortunate to have over 45 beautiful park recreation and special use facilities, including 285.5 acres of developed parkland and over 5,000 acres of open space, and a wide variety of our outdoor recreation opportunities for its citizens and visitors. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department promotes health and wellness and offers an array of fitness classes, sports, and recreational programs, cultural events, lifelong learning classes, and parks, trails, and facilities for fitness and sports and activities for all age groups and abilities. And whereas the Community Services Parks Department also provides programs to address the basic human service needs of its residents, including senior nutritional meals, and case management, youth and family outreach, information and referral, youth employment, and youth life skills training, homeless case management, prevention and housing, and full training programs. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department strengthens community safety and security and reduces juvenile crime while fostering young people's development and growth into productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs. And whereas the strength of Glendale is increased through intergenerational recreational programs and events for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, rewarding, and healthful, healthy lives. Now, therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month in Glendale and call on all of our citizens to celebrate by participating in recreation activities and community services and spending time in our community parks. Mr. Durant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council. As you just heard, more often than not, when we think about National Parks and Recreation Month, we often think about the programming and the services. And we are very proud for the programs and services and the array and variety that we're able to provide here in Glendale. But what I'd like to do today is to recognize the unsung heroes, which are the gardeners and the building repairs, and the guys that take care of the parks on a day-to-day basis and try to maintain them to meet the expectations and the quality that the residents of Glendale should expect from the city. In many respects, they are the face of the department. They're the ones that are in contact with the community on a day-to-day basis. They're not only mowing the lawns and trimming the trees and cleaning the walkways and picking up the trash, but they're cleaning the restrooms every day, sometimes two or three times a day, especially on the weekends, and especially during the summer months. They're the guys that drive around the city and all of its square miles, opening and closing the parks on a daily basis as well. So I thought this year we would recognize the landscape maintenance section. So I would like to call up Bill McKinley, who is a Park Services Manager, and Mr. Sean Hampton, who is one of our premier gardeners. Mr. Hampton is a 23-year employee of the City of Glendale. He has a particular expertise in ballfield maintenance, which is very, very important since we have 16 ballfields in Glendale, most of which are rented out on a regular basis. And he's also in charge of Lower Shoal, Glen Oaks, and Broadway and Wilson Parks. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Bill McKinley and to Sean Hampton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff. My name is William McKinley. I'm the Park Services Manager for Park Services Section 1, which is the north region that encompasses the parks from Park Ava Caron, Nibley Park, Verdugo Park, and on north to the San Gabriel Mountains on Duke Majin Wilderness Park. In addition to those duties, I also manage the landscape maintenance contract. And the real passion of my life, which is the Arbor Day tree planting program. I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the Community Services and Parks Department, the city of Glendale, and most importantly of all, the businesses and residents of the city of Glendale. Thank you very much.
And say a few words.
How you doing today, Mayor and Councilmember? You know, I've been working with the city for 23 years. I love my job. I'm responsible for like five parks. I take care of all the canyon areas, especially Glen Oaks, Lower Shoal, and the ballfield. And I have one part-time helper. I just want to let you know that I love working with the city. I love working cleaning the parks, taking care of the parks. Like last night, I was in my bed, and I was like thinking, what can I do to make the parks more better? It's like I already liked the city of Glendale. And I just want to let you know that, you know. It's a good thing working for the city.
I live two blocks from the Glen Oaks Park. I played there when I, back in the 1940s. But it is immaculate. That place is always loaded on the weekends. I looked it up on a site to visit, sites to visit in Glendale. Glen Oaks Park is listed. People come from all over to that one block park. I mean, you've trimmed it up so you can see good through the park. There's no hidden areas. You've done a great job on that park. So I appreciate it.
And Coco is one of my supervisors, too, and Lou McGlaughlin, the excellent supervisors. I just want to let you know that, too.
You guys do a great job. What is next, please?
Next is Mayor's commendations to the sponsors of the 2013 Glendale Cruise Night.
Okay, I'll read the proclamation first. Are you, no, you're not alone. I see somebody else come in. Says, "Presented to the Brand Boulevard of Cars. On behalf of City of Glendale and the City Council, I would like to express my sincere, know-hearted appreciation for your sponsorship of the 2013 Glendale Cruise Night. Your commitment and support to being a presented by sponsor is a great contribution in keeping Glendale tradition alive and thriving." Mr. Sananian, come down.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, members of the Council, city staff. My name is Onik Bolanikian. I'm a Community Services Manager with the Parks Department. I would like to invite you to the 20th Annual Cruise Night, which will be held this Saturday on Brand Boulevard between 5:30 and 10:30. The main stage will be at Brandon Milford. This year's Cruise Night entertainment will include yours truly, Mr. Rock and Roll Brian Byrne. He's been with us the last couple of years, providing entertainment. As a Masters of Ceremony, the safaris will be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Wipeout, and the Tokens also will be performing. The event will feature pre-1979 classic cars for everyone to enjoy. The reason why we're here tonight is, number one, to invite you all to Cruise Night, and to thank our sponsors. For the first time, it is anticipated that this year the event will be 100% funded by corporate and community sponsorships. And with the special thanks and sponsorship from Downtown Glendale Association, they're our naming sponsor. They donated $15,000. And the Brand Boulevard of Cars is a presented by sponsor. They donated $10,000. And we have many local businesses that donated between $1,000 and $1,500 for the event. We have collected $41,800 in monetary donations, and we're estimating another $11,000 in Cruise Night, you know, car registration totaling between $52,000 and $53,000. So we're excited to say that the event is 100% funded by donations. With that being said, I'd like to also invite Dan Bell. There's a new program that they're working on regarding social media. Dan?
Can I ask a question? How many years is this now, Cruise Night?
It's the 20th year. It started in 1994. This is the 20th year for Cruise Night.
And was almost killed about 10 years ago. Thank goodness it wasn't. I think I've turned, been there for 17. This will be the first one I've missed because I got a family application. But I entered my car a few years back, 1944, that I rode in when I was a baby. I won. Classic car. Amazing. So it's a great event, and 30,000, 40,000 people will be there. So hopefully, be down there, too, everybody. I'll miss it.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Now, we have Pete Merubian and Jared Anderson from Brand Boulevard of Cars. And then we also have Helen from DGA to get her commendation also next.
Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, I was absolutely not prepared to say anything today, but.
Then don't.
Since I'm here, I'll just start talking now. I'll cut it short. But thank you for this commendation, and we're just proud sponsors of the Cruise Night this year. Thank you.
And I forgot, I had another one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I'm Jared Anderson, and I serve as the Executive Secretary of the Brand Boulevard of Cars, a job I've held for over 40 years. People ask why we have new cars at the Classic Car Show, and that's because someday, the cars that you will see that are new, 40, 50 years from now, will be in the Cruise Night then. Brand Boulevard of Cars has been in existence in Glendale for over 80 years. And so I would venture to say many of the cars that you'll see Sunday were purchased on Brand Boulevard of Cars several years ago. Thanks for your proclamation.
Thank you. And I forgot, I have another one for Downtown Glendale Association. I'm sorry. I didn't recognize too many.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'm Helen McDonough, and I'm a board member on the DGA. I want to clarify that that is not the Directors Guild of America, but the Downtown Glendale Association. And we are very happy to be a sponsor of this great event that brings tens of thousands of people into our downtown area. And this year, we have created something very special, a limited edition button. And you have to come out on Saturday night and stop by the DGA table in order to receive this. It's a limited edition, so make sure you're there early. Thank you.
Sorry. Won't be able to make it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's nice to know it's all privately funded. It used to be city paid for. Now it's all the community. That's great. Dan?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As Onik mentioned, yes, this year, not only do, does the DGA have special pins, but we're doing a special contest here through the city with Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So we're asking the public who comes out, if they're watching this tonight, and we'll put this out on our social media, please use the hashtags #MyGlendale, #GlendaleCruiseNight, and #GlendaleAfterhours. And the best photo that comes in will be judged by city staff. We'll get some special prizes from the city. So a special night. Social media is huge. Come on out. Have a good time at Cruise Night and submit your photos versus social media.
It doesn't have to be a photo of a car.
It doesn't. It can be a wonderful shot of downtown Glendale.
A bunch of people acting silly.
In all its glory, absolutely. And I think Onik has some bags for you to say thank you for all your support for the event.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while we're getting those bags, let me just repeat that this is one of the best events that goes on in downtown Glendale. The Brand Boulevard, for three or four blocks, is completely closed. It's completely safe. It's all pedestrian access with wonderful vintage cars. All the restaurants on Brand Boulevard are open. There will be booths, free giveaways, great music. You can dance. And the evening usually is a very nice evening. The weather is very moderate and temperate, and it's a great chance to meet your neighbors, look at some engines under the hoods, and perhaps see some city councilmembers and city staff there to just chat with.
I think some will be there. Thank you very much, all of you, and good luck. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item, D, is the Mayor's commendation to the Crescent Valley Cycling Team for being the first team in the history of Southern California League to win the state championship.
Gee, I wonder if there's anybody here from that cycling team. You want to have them all come up? Stand around. They can get on TV better.
Absolutely, if we could.
Come on, just stand around them. We don't have enough pins, do we? How many pins do we have up here? Spread out, spread out.
The short ones.
We have pins?
Dan should be able to find some.
Hey, Dan Bell, can you find some pins? Dan? Yeah, good. Looks like about 20. We'll get you city pins to wear.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the Council.
I better write, read it.
Let's go ahead and read that, yeah.
Presented to the CV Cycling Team, congratulations on being the first team in the history of the SoCal League to win the state championship. Your dedication and commitment in practicing at least four to six days a week is exemplary. I commend your efforts in riding extensively throughout all the local mountains and Saturday adventure rides to new riding areas. I wish you success in your future endeavors. Now.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the Council, city staff. My name is Sean Toro. I'm an Assistant Project Manager with the Park Development, Community Services and Parks Section. Now, I'm sure you're asking yourself, why is a project manager introducing a cycling team?
Yes.
Good question. While we were building the Mountain Dew and Catalina Verdugo Trails, we came in contact with the CV Mountain biking team, and they showed a lot of interest in the trail. And through our conversations, learned that they ride all over Glendale Mountains' open space. And because of, you know, the LA County, let's see here, make sure I get the name right here. It's the LA County Competitive Trails Grant. We were able to provide these trails for these young men and women to train on, which has led them to becoming the state champions. There is no one else in this state that is better than these young men and women behind us. And the reason the city gets so interested and involved in these young kids, young men and women, is because they're ambassadors not only to the sport, to the community, but hopefully they're our future for the Trails and Open Space Patrol or our Mountain Bike Patrol. Now, I'm going to introduce the Lead Coach, Jim Rounden. And he's got a much better story than I do, but these young men and women are excellent, excellent students, and they're excellent athletes and great competitors.
Shall we give you the certificate first?
Sure, sure. Come on in.
Dan, you can start passing out the pins, save time. You can come over and present that while we're getting out, just to save time.
On behalf of the city, I'm proud to present this to you. I do a little cycling, but I am not in good enough shape to go up in the mountains. So I really admire what you've done. But you've brought a lot of pride to the city, and I'm so glad that you're inspiring people to go out and use those mountain biking trails and get out off the couches and get out into nature. So thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished members of the City Council and city officials. We are really honored to be here today, and we thank you for this acknowledgement. I want to kind of, first of all, acknowledge a few people that have been key and instrumental. The program would not exist without Dr. Jan Babington here, who actually spearheaded the formation of our team at Crescent Valley High School five years ago. So we wouldn't exist without her. I'd like to also thank and appreciate our new principal, Patricia Young, who is here in support of our team, even though she hasn't even worked a day yet as the new principal at the school. She's here to support us, and I certainly appreciate that. I also would be remiss in not mentioning the fact that it does take a fair amount of money to get these kids all over the state of California to feed them. I mean, anybody who's raised kids knows these guys eat like horses. And, you know, when we travel to races, we eat very well. And we are supported by the local businesses in the community, and we have had a tremendous outpouring of support. This year was a record year for support for us. And I would be remiss if I don't mention, you know, these people who support us. We can start with Mike Kobisi, very recognizable name here in this community. Mike is our title sponsor and been tremendously supportive, bought us an incredible NASCAR-like team canopy that made us the most professionally looking team in the entire league, emblazoned with our team logo and CV Falcons, and just a wonderful thing. We've had long time support from Montrose Bike Shop. They have been behind us from the very beginning. They keep all our bikes running. They support us in every possible way. Coach Rick Babington has been a longtime supporter for five years. Calrad Electronics, Anawalt Lumber, JSH Apparel, Montrose Pet Hospital, SL7C Dental Consulting, Anderson Ballard Corporation, that does a lot of building maintenance and building supervision here in the community, Barton Conray Dentistry, Bemmer's Clinic, Thomas Yang Architects, Optimal Performance Systems, State Farm Insurance, Pro Italia Motorcycles, Tommy's Burgers, Shriners Fine Sandwiches, Signset, and CV Weekly. All support our team, and we are beyond grateful for their support. We couldn't do what we do without their help. This team is an amazing collection of not only outstanding students because academically, that's always the first responsibility that they maintain. And we make that quite clear from the very beginning. Even though we have a very demanding practice schedule, we do make allowances when the school schedule gets overwhelming, as it can. And school has always come first for these kids, but they somehow balance school and athletics in an amazing way, and they work so hard, it's incredible. The road to what they did this year was incredible. They made history. No team from Southern California had ever won the California State Championship. It had been dominated by teams from Northern California. And literally, for the four years that I had gone to state championships, we literally got our heads handed to us. I mean, these teams just beat us and beat us badly. And no team from SoCal had ever done anything other than the third-place step on the podium, which one team accomplished last year. So for us to win the state championship this year was truly history-making, and will always be the first one in the record books as being the first state champions from Southern California. Along the way, this team was nearly perfect. They won five out of six events that we compete in. The one event that they did not win, there's approximately 2,000 points scored by a team on any given day. The winning score is around 2,000 points. The one race that they lost, which was the second race of the year, they lost by two points. After they lost that race, they never lost again. And so they won five out of six events. They were nearly perfect, dominant. And we had amazing individual accomplishments. We had 30 individual appearances on podiums by our racers in various race events, where they were acknowledged as a top-five competitor on the day. Some of the fields at times were up to 100 riders deep. At states, we had fields of 100 riders. Typically, we had had fields of 60, 70-plus riders. And we had 30 podium appearances of this group this year, meaning they accomplished top-five finishes on that day, which all combined to the overall team scoring. So they did amazing things. That broke our previous record of 17 podiums the year before. So, I mean, they obliterated it and completely rewrote the record book. We had the first individual series champion in the history of our school, meaning he won his class overall for the entire SoCal League. And unfortunately, he can't be with us today. He's traveling in Missouri with the Boy Scouts on some trip that they planned for three years. We have two of our team members that are on that trip. But Alexander DeRoche needs to be acknowledged. Alexander was amazing. He was the first league series champion in the history of CV Cycling. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Brenda Pratt, who was our first female winner in the history of CV Cycling. She won a race this year and had an outstanding season and got her name in the records books as the first girl from CV to ever win a race also. So some amazing things. You don't really want to get me started, because I can go on and on.
I know. I'm looking at the clock.
Anyway, I want to really just thank, I want to thank everyone who makes this possible. The kids really believed in themselves. They totally committed themselves. Our coaches are selfless. Nobody gets paid. We're all volunteers. We are so appreciative of the open space. If you stood outside here and you looked at every mountain you could see, this team has been to the top of every one of them many times, including Mount Lucans, including Mount Wilson, including anything you want to talk about. They fly up the Verdugo Mountains like they're on motorcycles. So they are a very talented and hard-working group, and they earned it. And I'm so proud of them. And what a great group of coaches. And thank you for your acknowledgement.
You just get Mr. Manukian to go out and go up there with you.
And you guys are always, and I want to mention one last thing.
One last thing.
This is a great opportunity for kids. We have.
He talks, doesn't he?
There are many, there are many, many opportunities now arising for these kids to get college educations through cycling. My oldest son, Lucas, is headed to Durango, Colorado, to go to Fort Lewis College, which is one of America's top 100 colleges, and it's also America's premier collegiate cycling college. They've won 18 national championships in the last 20 years. He is going there on a partial cycling scholarship, but mainly an academic scholarship. And he's going there to ride for the best team in the nation.
Well, that's the point I wanted. If I asked all your GPAs, I know they'd all be high.
They're very high.
It's amazing. I decorate, I decorate the rose float, and I'm amazed that ones that come out that are good workers all have 4.0 or around that range academically, and they still fit in working on the float. Same here. High GPAs, and you kill yourselves all week long.
We enjoy ourselves.
You can do them both. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
And now, all of those that want to leave quietly can go. Yeah, don't be embarrassed. We're just going to do the monotonous city business now. At least some. At least, something, it's monotonous. Okay, what is next, please?
Next at 3 E is appointment of board and commission members. These were the nominations of Councilmember Quintero made on June 25, 2013. E1 is Armon Kavanyan for Arts and Culture Commission, E2 is Cindy Vasquez, Audit Committee, E3 is Lila Ramirez, CDBG Advisory Committee, E4 is Alan Malikian, Design Review Board, E5 is Armin Ajamian, GWP Commission, E6 is Michael Morgan, Historic Preservation Commission, E7 is Rodney Kahn, Parks and Recreation and Community Services Commission, E8 is Greg Astorian, Planning Commission, E9 is Armando Gonzalez, Transportation and Parking Commission.
Let's see, I have nine cards. Just kidding, just kidding, got you that time.
Let me say, I, on my retirement from the city council, my appointees were theoretically taken off the different commissions and boards. Mr., the people I'm, I am nominating tonight are basically Mr. Manukian's slots, so to speak. Mr. Sinanian appointed his people, and so now, tonight, I am basically reappointing most of my original appointees to the different boards and commissions, with two exceptions. Everyone else is pretty much the same people that have been serving on these boards and commissions. Are there any questions? I mean, I could nominate all of them, or we could do them individually?
All of them, do them all together.
Do them all, all right.
Take a motion.
So, nominate, Kavanyan?
One through nine.
Armon, I nominate Armon Kavanyan for Arts and Culture, Cindy Vasquez for the Audit Committee, Lila Ramirez for CDBG, Alan Malikian for Design Review Board, Armin Ajamian for GWP, Michael Morgan for Historic Preservation, Rodney Kahn for Parks and Recreation, Greg Astorian for Planning Commission, Armando Gonzalez for Transportation and Parking.
Thank you, sir, second. Any comment? Call call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, thank you, what is next?
Next at 4 is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman?
Some of you who pay attention every week may have noticed that I missed two council meetings in a row, and I wanted to give a little explanation as to why. Some of you also know that for the last several years, my husband, Guillaume, and I have been trying to adopt a child, and just about a month ago, we got a call, and, Artie, do you want to? And a few days later, a surprisingly fast time later, Rachel Martine came into our lives. She was born June 16th, which was Father's Day. We took her home from the hospital on the 18th, and she's been with us ever since. I had to spend about two and a half weeks in New York, waiting for the state of New York to give me permission to take this child out of the state. The adoption formally will take about six months, but she is with us and has been with us for the past month, and really has changed our lives and brought so much joy into our homes, and I just wanted to introduce her to the community and hope that you will excuse those two council meetings that I missed. I think it's a pretty decent excuse. Thank you.
It is. Any other comments?
Thank you.
I hate to follow on that, congratulate, oh, right ahead, if you have a question.
We got word this week, of course, we like to brag about Glendale being one of the safest cities in the nation, and in the state, but we got word this week that Glendale is the fourth saintliest city in the entire United States. Now, how do they come up with being a saintly city? Well, you go to the seven deadly sins, and you rate your city against them. So, the first one is, the first sin is lust, and they judge how many strip clubs per capita you have. We don't have any, I don't think, do we? Anyone?
Across the tracks, that's across the tracks.
Mr. Weaver?
The next deadly sin is pride, and they judge you by how many cosmetic surgeons you have per capita. The next one is wrath, and that's judged by your violent crime per 1,000 residents. The next one is envy, and they judge you by theft per 1,000 residents. The next deadly sin is greed, and that's judged by the percentage of disposable income given to charity each year. The sixth is gluttony, and they measure the percentage of obese residents. And the seventh is sloth, and they judge the percentage of physically inactive residents. So they tallied it all up, first place is New York City, believe it or not, second is Gilbert, Arizona, third is Fremont, California, and we come in fourth, Glendale, California. Congratulations to all our saintly residents.
And... I'm glad you cleared the, you know, classification, I thought it meant boring, in terms of saintly.
Oh, I don't think so. And, Spalania, we got another award this week, can you, Mr. Choas, tell us about that?
We were recognized with Silver Award for, by SWANA
Right.
for our integrated waste management operations. We are hoping to bring our administrator and his team to you, I believe, next week?
July 30th.
On July 30th, for recognition by the council. If you recall, we recently were recognized for our sewer crew as being one of the best, I think the best, in of our size in the state of California, and so the physical infrastructure, the maintenance of that infrastructure, and the service that our teams provide is something we take great pride in, so thank you for bringing that up, sir.
And we should start compiling a list for the whole year, the awards we're getting, because we get many awards that people in the city don't remember or don't think about. We get criticisms, but we are a pretty good city, too. Mr. Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Mike?
Sorry, the mayor and I visited Bryant Park, which is under construction, just today in the afternoon, and I think they have tours, right, people can, or is it just for media?
We're having a media tour coming up Friday.
Media tour?
To tantalize them.
Yeah, so, exactly, it's really special. The end product is going to wow a lot of people, and it's a real, real gem and an asset that we have in this city, and hopefully it'll generate more business interest and tourism interest, and I'm just happy, I was, you know, a little wowed by what I saw. So, we have that to look forward to. I also missed a couple of weeks, I think I mentioned before I left, that I was in Armenia to baptize my three boys, and that happened. Today's my boy's, one of my boy's fifth birthday, and I was hoping to get home in a timely manner, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Move it along as best we can.
Yeah, we can hit the calendar, though.
You never know.
But, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I have just one, I don't like bringing it up, but I feel I have no recourse but to mention it. A registered voter in this city had requested the day of the election, or the day after, for certain information on provisional ballots and voice by mail. I was on the second, on the 12th, again requested, and came back that the city clerk would sit down with him, it's not the normal course of business, but would sit down and satisfy him. This person, Shai Corleone, has called me a number of times, and I called him back, find out, have you got the information yet? Mr. Garcia said, kept telling me he was checking on it, I got no response. Now, if you make a public records request in this city, 10 days from then, you have to respond. He is waiting into July with no response. I just talked to him again today. I don't know why, it's not getting it, but I wish the parties involved in this would sit down, do it. I'm tired of asking through channels like I always do. This is the first time I've had to sit here and wait and wait and wait.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, first of all, I have not received, and I have not been contacted by Mr. Corleone on this, so if he has followed up, he's followed up with your office when he should be following up with ours. Secondly, there was some disagreement as to whether it's appropriate to furnish the names of those individuals, that's up for question under the California Elections Code, and so we've been working with the city attorney to determine that, and we don't feel that, at least I don't feel that, is appropriate to turn over those names post-election. So if Mr. Corleone were to contact us, I would give him that answer, if there's any other clarification that Mr. Garcia would like to add to that.
Three and a half months now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies, we've had a couple of discussions with Mr. Kusak's office, but we didn't close the loop on that, and we will.
Okay, I think it's only right, because when I keep calling him and find out, he doesn't know anything yet, that's not the way we do business here.
You can call the city clerk's office, 548-4000.
He's watching, he'll call you tomorrow. Okay, with that, let's move on.
I could just clarify, to the extent there aren't records, and that's part of the reason, to the extent there aren't records, we can't really produce something we don't have, and so that's part of the issue we're trying to work through, but I do apologize for lack of follow-through of the last comment.
The last comment, last comment was from Mr. Kusak, and I will sit down with you and provide you the opportunity to examine each of the rejected envelopes. But as of yet, we do not have a list of rejected votes prepared, nor do we plan on preparing that list in our ordinary course of business, and that was April the 12th. This is July 16th or so? He deserves some kind of a response. He's a resident of the city, and was a candidate, so, with that, let's move on, what's next?
Next is consent items, following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards.
I'd like to pull 5C.
5C, okay. How about the rest? Is there a motion on the rest?
Move the consent calendar.
Second, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, please read 5C under the record.
5C is Chief of Police regarding County of Los Angeles Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Trust Fund, and Award of Grant Funds for the Purpose of Prosecution and or Investigation of Real Estate Fraud. C1 is Resolution Authorizing Glendale Police Department's Participation in the Program and Acceptance and Expenditure of the Grant Funds.
Thank you.
As to C2, is Resolution Appropriating $189,000 of Grant Funds for the Program.
Mr. Ajarian, we do have Mr. Povilitis here.
Thank you, well, let me pose my question and my remarks, I definitely support applying for and receiving these funds. The question is, what exactly type, what exact type of real estate fraud are we zeroing in on in this city? When I was going through my home-buying process over a year ago, I was firsthand observing several different types of fraud, which was, although did not cause me any financial loss, I think was certainly disheartening to me and perhaps others in my same position. What are we looking at with this grant, and what are we focusing on?
Carl Povilitis, Captain Investigative Services with the Police Department, and let me give you an opportunity to hear from the person who actually does this, because this does fund a position for the department to focus in on real estate fraud. This is Officer Sean Milligan, and he actually handles the real estate, so I'll let you.
Mr. Milligan, Captain.
My name's Sean Milligan, I'm a detective with the Financial Crimes Unit. I am assigned under the grant funding, for the last several years, this program has funded my ability, or a detective's ability, to investigate several different types of fraud that come under that umbrella. The money comes specifically from when a deed or a document is recorded with a counter recorder, a $3 fee, or $3 of that fee goes towards this fund, which allows investigation. It can be a wild deed that's filed, it can be where someone comes in and they strip equity from a home, there's a multitude of different crimes that can occur that involve real estate.
If any residents feel that they've been defrauded, or feel that something less than legal is underfoot, they can call the Glendale Police Department?
Absolutely, and a report will be taken, and the report comes to me as the detective. I evaluate that, meet with that particular victim, and decide if it falls under the grant, if it falls under the grant, I would investigate under that, if it doesn't, then it would be followed up by a Financial Crimes Investigator.
And you want to know, because you want to find out what his categories it falls into.
Correct, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, detective, and captain.
Remember that out there, people.
Well, Ms. Ajarian, I assume you were referring to the numerous short sales that had taken place.
That was part of it, right, the so-called short sales with other unscrupulous issues going on.
Right, there's short sale issues, and loan mod scams, and all those different things, and certain criteria has to be met for it to fall under the grant, but all of those things will be looked at by our agency.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
I'll move 5C, Mr. ...
Hey, roll call. Wait, wait, the second? Second, roll call.
5C 1 and 2.
Yes.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, next, please.
Next, I'm Mr. Oral Communication, this is a portion reserved for three-minute community event announcements, the full five-minute portion will be revisited at the conclusion of all city business.
Thank you, three minutes, we're speaker, Dottie Sharkey.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, I'm Dottie Sharkey, Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, and here to tell you about, we have three signature events, and we're here to tell you about the third one this year, but before I go on, I wanted to thank everybody who was there for our Glendale Dodger Night, it was so much fun, right?
Absolutely, because it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
Still not playing centerfield, though.
Huh? Oh, I know, he wanted to play centerfield. So, next week is our Glendale Golf Championship, it's our second year trying this, we did so well last year that we're doing it again this year, and our city manager is going to take the first swing.
Be prepared for disappointment.
I heard you were gonna play, too. So if I could just have a quick promo here, and then I'll get out of here and let you get on with your meeting, so, I think it might be queued up.
The Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation is pleased to announce the second annual Glendale City Golf Championship, coming in July 2013. The presenting sponsor for this event is the local trusted choice independent insurance agents, and 100% of the proceeds will go to the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, to support their mission, which is to foster well-maintained parks, picturesque open spaces, and innovative recreational programs which enrich our entire community. The first round will take place at the Shoal Canyon Golf Club on July 25th, followed by the finals at the Oakmont Country Club on July 29th. Registration is $85 per player, and carts are included. For more information or to sign up, please visit glendalegolfchampionship.com, or call Sponsorship opportunities are available. Please, register today and enjoy golfing in our community while helping maintain our local parks and open space.
Okay, hope to see a golfer there.
And, Dottie, sorry about the loss of your cap.
Oh, thank you.
I know the feelings.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, next is Wesley Kloyes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and the residents of Glendale. My name is Wesley Kloyes, and I am a Vietnam veteran, and representing the Veteran Welcome Center at Wellness Works here in Glendale, and thank you for this time. I'd like to remind all veterans and their families that this Saturday, July 20th, is the monthly Third Saturday BBQ and Healing Clinic, and we offer healings of acupuncture, massage therapy, and other healings by licensed volunteer practitioners, and Glendale has a lot of volunteers. The barbecue of hot dogs, hamburgers, and salmon burgers, and more, is no charge to veterans, and it's from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And Wellness Works is located at 540 West Broadway here in Glendale. And also reminding you that Saturday night is the 20th Annual Cruise Night on Brand Boulevard, and it's going to be a big deal, we've already heard about it, but the city's Veterans Coalition will have a booth set up, representing local community organizations serving veterans. So come to the car show, stop by the booth, say hello, and learn how you can help a veteran. And if you are interested in the Listening Project, Civilians Listening to Veterans, on Saturday, the 27th, there's an orientation at Wellness Works at 11:00 a.m. Reservations are needed. And I'd also like to announce that the Veteran Welcome Center, in response to America's always thanking veterans for their service, we say, "You are welcome, America." always thanking veterans for their service, we say, "You are welcome, America," and we will continue serving and helping other veterans. We ask America, we need your help. So if you have any questions, please give me a call at 818-247-2062. And remember, Saturday's barbecue is free to veterans, and we're at 540 West Broadway, right here in Glendale. And again, I'm at 818-247-2062. And I want to thank you again for this time. And Ms. Freeman, my birthday is June 15th. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more cards. What is next, please?
Next, under adoption of ordinance, is 7A is ordinance authorizing a development agreement by and between the City of Glendale and GFC Glendale Associates LLC in connection with the proposed Central Wilson Mixed Use Development Project to be located at 130 North Central Avenue. This was proposed on June 25th, 2013, by Council Member Quintero.
I have no cards, any comments? Yes, Mr. Najarian?
This came before us several weeks ago, didn't it, Mr. Povilaitis? This came before us several weeks ago. This is Central and Wilson, where they have a development agreement that extends out 15 years?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years. And I asked you at that point, are there any other entities that we have a 14-year-length development agreement with? And that's when you said the Walt Disney Company. And this is where I get to say, I know the Walt Disney Company, I've seen the Walt Disney Company, and this development is not a Walt Disney Company development. I think the length of time is too long for an individual lot in this manner, far different than the Disney GC3, far different than the Americana. We've discussed this before, and that's just my comment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I will make the motion, and then let me add that unlike the Walt Disney Company, unlike the Americana, this will be no subsidy. There will be no subsidy for these private developers and for this property. The other two companies, well, just say they receive heavy subsidies from the taxpayer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other comment? Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sunion?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What is next, please?
8A is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Construction on the Maryland Avenue Park in Connection with specification number 3391R. 8A1 is motion awarding a contract to ARC Construction Company an amount of $1,235,062, authorizing contingency of $61,753, and rejecting all other bids.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ari, could you queue up the presentation, please? The slide before you is focusing on the Maryland Park, and we are excited to report to you that we recommend awarding of the construction contract to ARC Construction. We want to take advantage of this evening to just give you a brief update on the multiple number of projects, or the number of multiple projects that we have accomplished since 2008. So if we can go to the first slide. Thank you. I know the font is a little too small to read, but this wasn't meant to be a listing, a laundry list of all the projects, but I'd like to go through and quickly highlight some of the key projects. But next to each project, you'll notice that the project cost is also included. So we have all sorts of projects from, ranging from landscape improvements at the Montrose Shopping Park, all the way down to doing the Udolphreck Center for $8 million, and then moving down to the Maple Park Community Center revitalization for $4.5 million. We have also highlighted the funding sources for each of these projects. What this indicates is that we are really not heavily reliant on our general fund, but we also take advantage of our CDBG funds as well as our external funding sources, Prop 84 and other state grants. Perhaps I could read down the list very quickly, not to take any more of your time. We mentioned the shopping park at the Montrose Community, Udolphreck Recreation Center, Central Park Improvements, Le Mesnier Barn at the Duclignier Wilderness Park, that's a seismic upgrade. We have the Glendale Heritage Park, that's also our heritage garden, also known as Cedar Park. Restroom replacements at New York, Carr and Glorieta and Palancony Parks, Shoal Canyon Ball Field renovations. We rehabbed the Dunsmore Park Community Center, and we also revitalized the Maple Park Community Center and built about a 10,000-square-foot addition. We have been busy replacing playgrounds throughout the city. We've done seven so far, and we have about six coming up within the next fiscal year. We have the Griffith Manor Park renovation that was completed about two years ago. Pacific Park, the pool, needs no introduction, it's been heavily used since its grand opening several years ago. Doran Gardens Park Development, that was a coordination project with a private developer. Riverwalk Phase 1 opened the December of last year and has been underway and being used by our community extensively. The Catalina Verdugo Project, I'm happy to report that will be started in construction the first part of August. And we also completed the security improvements, fencing improvements at Brand Park and Carr Park. All of these projects totaled a little over $33 million of investment, again, from CIP funds, CDBG funds, state and county grants, as well as housing funds.
If you look at just the last year alone, three major parks, Mountain Dew, Riverwalk, and Doran Gardens in particular, where there was no recreational opportunity in that specific sense, especially with Doran Gardens, bringing that to the neighborhood, and when you look at the expansion of recreation in the Mountain Dew Trail, especially as an ADA accessible trail, and then Riverwalk, and looking at different modes of recreation with the opportunity for horse riding, it's something that I think the city, and certainly the city council, can and should be proud of, that especially looking at since 2008, the onset of the Great Recession, even when development took a hiatus during that five-year period, that four-year period, the council stayed very, very busy in bringing in $33 million worth of new investment in recreational quality of life opportunities for this community. It's something that hardly any city, certainly any city our size, could ever boast.
I appreciate that correction, Scott. The Catalina Verdugo is actually the --
Mr. Quintero? Let me repeat that just a little bit slowly. Since 2008, since the beginning of the Great Recession, the City of Glendale spent $33 million on parks spread throughout the city from north to south. $33 million.
The next slide highlights the funding sources for this specific project, the Maryland Avenue Park project. CDBG funds were used in about $1.3 million to acquire the property and begin the design process. Capital improvement funds, approximately $296,000, pay for the design costs, and we received a state Prop 84 grant, approximately $1.7 million to pay for the construction and the construction management costs. So the overall investment specifically for this project is about $3.3 million, which includes the property acquisition cost. This slide just briefly highlights the council actions previously taken by this body. You may recall that in February of 10, the grant was approved, and the conceptual plan was adopted at that point, and we also, the council also adopted the negative declaration at that point. Proceeding to October 2012, the plans were, again, approved by the city council, and the specs were also approved and authorized bidding, which proceeded the following December. However, this is not an anomaly, that we're facing this same challenge with a lot of our construction projects that are going out to bid in this construction climate. We are receiving a fewer number of contractor interests. We're seeing that trend changing, however, which is a good sign. At that point in December 2012, we only had two bids that we received, and they were both higher than our estimate. We came back to the council, and we received approval to reject the bids, reduce the projects go slightly to be within budget, and go out to bid again, which we did in March of this year. At that point, I'm happy to announce that we got 10 interested bidders, and we reviewed them all. And at this point, we recommend award of the contract to ARC Construction. I'd like to turn this portion of the presentation over to Peter Verheilig, who's a project manager on this project, and has been working on it ever since its inception.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff. Here you can see the existing site between Windsor Road and Garfield on Maryland. It's what originally were three home lots, and it's at the end of the H Alley, which leads to the housing project to the east. For context, it's directly behind the BMW dealership on Brand Boulevard. And there's another view from the street. Demolition was performed by the Housing Department at about the time that parks purchased it from the Housing Authority. These are some of the major features in the park, and I'll go over them on the site plan, which is the next slide. But you can see we've got a water detention basin that's disguised to be a bridge. The vertical elements of the bridge, there are nine panels that will actually have public art on those panels, so we've called it an Art Walk, which will start from the main gateway, which will also have some artwork, and then lead on to this bridge element that runs at a diagonal through the park. We've got several seating opportunities, including under a shade structure that's reminiscent, we're using corrugated metal for the roof. It's supposed to be reminiscent of the agricultural theme that the whole park is supposed to emphasize, which pays homage to Tropico's past, the agricultural past. We've also got a section, a fitness area, which is meant to provide opportunities for adults and young adults who frankly have outgrown play equipment, so here's a way to socialize and get fit at the same time. We've got a community garden, and we, the plots are raised, so they'll be accessible for disabled persons, and we are anticipating some interest from the local schools, maybe as, with a garden club, maybe using one or two of the plots.
That's a quick question, Mr. Mayor. How many plots are there in the community?
I believe we've got 12.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Yes. We also have, like most mini-parks have, there is an open lawn area, and in addition to the large seating area, we've got smaller tables and benches around. And as I mentioned, the public art component will be the Art Walk. But we've also got Brett Goldstone, who did the Riverwalk gates, and he's actually done several examples that you'll see later in this, in the presentation. And then we've got several opportunities for play for young children. We've got a play structure that will be for children 5 to 12 years old. There is a two-base swing set for tots and for 2- to 5-year-olds. And we've also got, or actually for 5- to 12-year-olds, and also kind of a rocks and ropes kind of play structure for the 2- to 5-year-olds. So here's our concept, and you can see on the left, on Maryland Avenue, under that large green tree is the main entry, and you can either split to the north, past the fitness area, and a seating area, and then the community garden, which isn't accurately represented. It was just the concept. There are many more plots, as we talked about. The lawn area, as you rotate around, some informal seating. Oh, I have a pointer. And actually, this is an interesting feature, too. It's a precast concrete bench, a raised bench, and you will see some images later. They have a technology where they can photo imprint or photo etch historic photos into the seatback, and there is also some historic references in the seatback, so we're trying, really trying to emphasize the historic past of this area of what was once Tropico. And then as we come around, there's some more seating over here, swing sets, the sand, the rocks and ropes area, and that was, that's the main play area for the 5- to 12-year-olds. Let's see, and as, if we came in the entrance and came south, that is the infiltration basin, where the water from the entire site, rainwater and irrigation water, drains to a basin underneath that will recharge the water table. And we've also got the shade structure there with the picnic, with the picnic table-type seating. Let's see. This is, these are the graphics that are intended to be used on those, on that precast bench seatback. So we've done some research with the collections section of the library for historically relevant photographs, and I'm actually really excited about this. I've seen it in a park in San Juan Capistrano that the consultant did down there, too, and it came out really well. Here are examples of some of the gates, and to my great shame, I didn't include the gate from Riverwalk, but we have some other examples of the LA River gates. And here are examples of the Greenfields equipment that we've specified, taking into account quite a bit of community input on which ones were chosen. And here are just some of the graphics from the playground manufacturer for the playground equipment. And we switched out the roof before it was going to be some kind of roto-molded shiny plastic tree-looking thing, and that is a corrugated metal roof, so it'll match the shade structure, and again emphasize that agricultural packing shed design. And then we have the, of course, the swing sets and rocks and ropes. Our schedule, if awarded tonight, will have the contract executed by September and start construction in early October, and it's a six-month construction period, so we will be looking forward to a grand opening in March of 2014. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Certainly.
Says the scope was amended without compromising the intent of the project. You cut almost a half a million dollars. In just general terms, what did you cut for a half a million dollars? That's a --
Well, originally, the play structure that I showed you was going to be a custom-designed art piece as well as a play structure. So it was going to be a custom-designed precast concrete structure, and then the artist would come in and cover it with mosaic tile, and that saved us $200,000. In addition, there were several raised wall elements in the park that we turned into ground-level planters. So it was a little here, a little there.
Hey, I was just, the major ones. You hit it. Okay, thank you. I do have a speaker card unless somebody has comments.
Um, we'll wait.
Okay. One speaker.
Thank you.
Two minutes. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. This is a wonderful mini-park, I would call it. It's a nice start, but where's the soccer complex for the teenagers and young adults? South Glendale doesn't have that. Now, the mayor and Mr. Quintero was proud to say that in 2008, when all this construction and building all these parks was wonderful, ladies and gentlemen, that's when these council members, including Mr. Weaver, that's the three of them, Quintero, Weaver, and Najarian, approved over $8 million for salaries for our city workforce, which in turn became pensions. And today, instead of having money for a soccer complex, or at least to start the complex idea, we're giving what? We're giving out pensions, and pensions of over $100,000 a year. We have our former chief of police, Rand DePampa, just leaving at age 57, with a pension of $197,000 for life. How many soccer balls could that buy? How many soccer nets could that buy? Where is this council's priority? I know, already with a shoe. Already would you shoot close my PowerPoint? It's called pay-to-play politics. Those who give campaign contributions get. And our council members right now, Quintero, Najarian, Freeman, Najarian, you can see that in these years, that's how much money they receive from the city unions. And this year...
Uh, Mr. Boyl, this isn't to the point of the discussion. What do you have to say about this park?
I'm saying that this...
This has nothing to do with it, Mr. City Attorney. Does it any correlation?
Not sufficiently, no, Mr. Mayor.
So either get on track or you're done.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We, what we're talking about is Maryland mini park.
Yes.
I wish this mini park could have been expanded to become a complex. I know this is grant money.
You're, sorry, your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Quintero, according to the report I'm reading here, this project is funded by California State Proposition 84 Grant as part of the statewide park development and community revitalization program.
Absolutely.
You didn't say that.
Boy, it's part of grant money, but we're just some general fund money.
This is not a debate.
Thank you.
You're done. Plus the fact, if you want to turn that into a soccer park, you're going to tear down apartment houses where people are living at an enormous cost of money and the relocations of those people. And then you're going to do environmental documents, which everybody around the area is going to be mad about. And then you're going to have to find parking for all the cars that are going to come with the kids to use the soccer fields. Figure that one out. Mr. Quintero, you want to add anything?
We're back to the same never-ending... Once again, let me repeat, the city of Glendale has spent $33 million since 2008. I'd actually like to have a list, or rather, an accounting as to how much money we've spent on parks and open space since 2001. I know for a number of years, we were purchasing land and building. There is, in fact, a soccer field, and it'll soon have artificial turf not far from this location at Pacific Park, as well as a baseball diamond. People, kids still play baseball in the city of Glendale. And of course, we have the soccer complex up, a regional soccer complex, as well as a baseball, a number of baseball diamonds, and the trail up into the mountains at our complex off the freeway. So that answers that. I'm happy that we're moving forward and in the final stages of design. It's been a long time in coming. This property had a lot of issues when we first acquired it, and I believe we took it in eminent domain, or legally, maybe not eminent domain, but we had lots of issues acquiring title.
Yeah, we did. It was significant issues.
But we were, we were determined to build a park here, and I wouldn't quite call it mini. It's a very good parcel. I like the way it's laid out. It's just excellent design for residents of all ages. I'm particularly happy to see that fitness equipment. I saw quite a bit of this type of equipment in public parks in Korea and China. And on a personal note, I've been looking for a location to start training Mr. Weaver.
For what?
And so I think like I have...
For retirement?
Upper body, right, for retirement. So I think we found the spot, Mr. Weaver, when I become your personal trainer.
Bless you, Mr. Quintero.
But it's a very good idea. Compliments to staff and Public Works that have worked on this.
Just on him.
And when, hopefully, and when the money becomes available, there's nothing precluding us from expanding this to something bigger like a soccer field or baseball park, right?
Look what's around it. Apartment buildings that'll have to all be condemned.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Or bought.
When money becomes available and things change.
You're talking, I bet better than $10 million. Don't hold your breath.
Well, and Mr. Weaver, let me just say, I mean, for those people that keep talking about soccer fields in the South, we have lots of opportunities with the school district. Roosevelt, middle school and other schools, we paired with, is it Columbus down at the very end of, Cerritos, with Cerritos, we've done a wonderful, hopefully Roosevelt will be next. Because it's not just about money. I mean, these are families that live in this city, and do we want to start moving out entire families to provide this kind of open space? I don't think so. The solution is obviously like Pacific Park, where we teamed with the school district and Cerritos, and hopefully Roosevelt might be the next large space that can accommodate more soccer teams.
I have another question for staff. Is it all fenced off on entrance off of Maryland only, or can you enter off of the alley also?
There is no entrance off the alley at this point.
Okay. Will it be locked up at sunset or at dusk or whatever, like some of the other parks?
Mr. Mayor, this park will be operated just like all of our other gated parks, open at dusk and closed at sunset. So the gates will be closed at sunset.
There's trouble during the summer, when it's 100 degrees during the day, people come out at sunset in the evening, and those areas with a lot of young people probably living.
Well, that's a very good plan. We do have some parks that close at 10:00. So...
This looks like one of them.
Could be.
Okay, thank you. The only comments I had, I'm very forgetful in my later years. I didn't know where this was when I did my homework. It said the Maryland Street Park, or Maryland Street Park, and I was trying to picture it. I couldn't recall. I knew of this site and I didn't know if it was others. There was no street address on our report, nor is there in the motion. Please put a street intersection or an address when you bring these kind of projects to the council. And secondly, there should be a concept drawing or something in here for us to have our minds refreshed on what we're looking at. I got two pages of paper. That's inadequate when we're spending one and a half million dollars. So those two things should be in. That just goes back to my emphasis, all project management belongs in engineering division, not in Parks and Rec, not in any other division. I spent my career, project management was in engineering or stood alone as a separate department. So engineering would know not to give us a report like this that doesn't have the information we need to do a review. So with that, I love it. I think it's time to, boy, how long has this been going on? Like I said, years. So finally, the neighborhood's going to get something of their own down there. Very pleased it's going to happen. So do I have a motion?
Move 8A1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
At 8B is Director of Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA, and between the City of Glendale Management Association, GMA. E1 is a resolution approving and adopting the MOU commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 for GPOA. Resolution, at B2 is a resolution approving and adopting the MOU commencing July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014, GMA.
Mr. Chou?
Yes, sir. As it appears that we are successfully, knock on wood, navigating or have navigated the Great Recession, the greatest threat to our own ability to sustain ourselves as an organization, is losing control of our single largest cost driver, which is our personnel cost. I am pleased and proud to report to you, and Mr. Doyle will answer any specific questions that you may have, that at least in these first couple of rounds of negotiations with our employee associations, that message of restraint and responsibility has been reflected and embraced by our associations. To the extent that with GPOA, the request and the meet-and-confer negotiations, good-faith negotiations that have been undertaken have been very reasonable indeed, such that the basis of the MOU that's being proposed to you features an increase in the payment of overtime hours for court time from two to four hours, and a modification of our civil service appeal process for disciplined officers, such that we would be going to a agreed-upon hearing officer who would then make a determination subject ultimately to civil service commission. With respect to the GMA, which is our management group, and as it reflects to the general managers, there is equal restraint there, such that we are contemplating, as part of this MOU proposed, a defined contribution-style program with respect to the retiree health savings plan, which would be a $25 per month contribution by the city to those employees after they've served five years of service with the city. Also, we would be providing safety footwear and a specialty pay for GWP electrical section supervisors who are performing hazardous rubber glove assignments as it pertains to 12 KV lines. We also had looked at the expansion beyond the general wellness program that is offered for this employment group and allow for something beyond that, not physical fitness, but professional development, to reflect that the MNO costs and MNO budgets of the departments have been cut back dramatically and are not being restored in the near term. And then finally, with the GMA sworn police managers, allowing for a $250 per month on-call assignment pay for police lieutenants, because they do spend a considerable amount of time on their off-duty here answering questions or corresponding by email. And then lastly, for police captains, increasing the current, increasing by $100 per month, the similar on-call duty pay from $250 to $350 per month. Again, all told, very, very pedestrian by way of what the overall costs are. You see in your staff report that the MOU between the city and GPOA is estimated at $120,000 per year. The GMA general managers, $133,000, and the GMA sworn police managers at $39,000. Again, Mr. Doyle will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I doubt if he can add more, but question. How much salary increase did any of them get?
There is no COLA featured.
No increase in salaries, right?
By way of cost of living adjustments.
How about pensions? Any increase in pension benefits?
No. These positions, I'll share.
So, no. Mr. Doyle, do you want to add anything to what he said? I think you have a seat. I have a card, so you might have to speak. Two minutes. Mike Moehl. Yeah, I'm afraid to give you three. Two minutes.
Good morning, council members and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Moehl. Council members, especially Mayor Weaver, will tell us and brag about how wonderful our city employees have been, especially the police department and our managers. For the record, let's talk about, according to the Department of Labor Statistics, the 10 most dangerous jobs in this country, and according to CNN Money, how much money these occupations pay. Number one, our commercial fishermen. Their salary is $30,000, medium income, and they don't have a union. The next dangerous is a logger, a pilot, a sanitation worker, a roofer, ironworker, farmer and rancher, truck driver, delivery man, electrical power worker, line man, taxi cab driver. None of these people make anything like $100,000 to $200,000 salaries or pensions of $100,000. In fact, the highest pay of these top 10 was $118,000 for a pilot. Most of them make less than $50,000. In the city of Glendale, the police and the fire department, their median income is between $70,000 and $98,000 a year plus a pension. Why don't we all move towards Social Security for future employees? We cannot afford the status quo. Pensions and salaries, unions have to go with the buggy whip. How many people are on Social Security, the viewing audience, who are making less than $15,000 a year? And if your name was Bill Gates and you contributed $100 million a year to your salary, to your job, the most you could receive is a Social Security check of just $30,000 a year. Wow. And we have the best employees that money can buy. Thank you.
Well...
Well, once again, Mr. Moehl describes the difference between a pension and an entitlement safety net program, such as offered by the federal government. If you want to talk about return on investment, certainly you can take a look at the results generated by both the Glendale Police Department and the Glendale Fire Department, one of the safest cities in the entire nation and in the state of California. And again, from the fire department side, although that's not part of the item here, Class 1 fire department offering extraordinary life safety.
Yeah, Mr. Moehl's got up and thrown that same line out a number of times over the years, nothing new about it. I just tell you, anybody in this room has watched the news over the last six months a year. How many policemen have been killed in the line of duty? How many firemen have died in the line of duty? Not hazardous, eh? Wow. I must be looking at the wrong broadcasts on TV. How ridiculous to make those comparisons. Okay, is there a motion on A, B, 1 and 2?
No, moved.
Second. Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Next, at 8C is Acting General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding License Agreement Template to Grant a License to Attach to City Polls by Cable Television Corporations, Video Surveillance Providers, Telephone Corporations. C1 is Resolution Approving a License Agreement Template in accordance with AB 1027 and Authorizing Negotiation and Execution of Agreements. C2 is Resolution Amending CYP Schedule to Add AB 1027. C3 is Resolution Authorizing Execution of a License Agreement and Granting a License to CCO SoCal 1D IDBA Charter Communications and Ratifying License Agreements to be Effective Retroactively on January 1, 2012.
Thank you. Mr. Chou?
Yes, sir. As you know, AB 20, or 1027 is now effective, requires us to allow telecoms to attach for our utility poles. Thus, we are asking for you to adopt the attached, the attachment fee for approval of the template agreement and to allow an actual license to Charter Communications. At this point, Doreen Marterosian, our deputy city attorney, is available for any questions.
Oh, not necessary, unless there's any comments. Not, is there a motion on 7, 1, no, 8, C, 1, 2 and 3?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
A D is Acting General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Service and Supply Contract to Provide Activated Carbon Absorber Media Services for Landfill Gas Condensate Treatment at the Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Plant. At D1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing a Five-Year Contract with the Pure Effect Inc. for a total not to exceed amount of $150,000.
Mr. Chou?
Yes, sir. We just ask that we allow for this agreement with PEI. They've been working with us. We have to take care of the condensate that builds up in the wastewater effluent at the Shoal Gas Plant.
Any questions, Israel?
Why are we dispensing with the competitive bidding procedure?
Because at this point, the service provider that we use, the special, the special speciality of the equipment that we have and their ability to work with the equipment that we have on site makes it a very limited universe of people to bid on this particular contract. To the extent that it's $30,000 a year, that's well within what the market is. We have the experience, we have their equipment. They actually are providing that level of service to us at this point. I don't think we get a better deal outside.
Just let me add, while it's single source, no competitive bidding, is when we get down to these cases where there's really only one in the marketplace that'll do a certain thing, that's when we go with this kind of a selection. Okay, is there a motion on?
8D1?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
A D is Acting General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Emergency Contracts for Repairs at the Grayson Power Plant. E1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing Various Contracts on an As-Needed Basis for a Cumulative Amount Not to Exceed $5 Million.
Mr. Chou?
Similar to the discussion previous, although this is a different item and a significantly larger item, but it serves really as an invest or an insurance policy, the amount of money that is being put up is not to be spent, but rather to be earmarked in case of necessary emergency repairs at the Grayson Power Plant, because the amount of time that it could take to actually bid out the work in lieu of actually delivering and making...
take to actually bid out the work in lieu of actually delivering and maintaining a level of service at the power plant could result in significant fines to GWP. We are asking for your, your permission to move forward with this overall cap of $5 million for the possible replacement and repair of this facility. Mr. Linz is in the audience if you have specific questions.
I only comment with this, how fast can we get our contractors on board?
Well.
In a matter of hours?
Well, yeah, we would be able to.
That's the whole point. It's there, they don't have to come to us or whatever immediately in there because we can't afford to have.
We maintain them on those POs, yes.
And we can't have downtime.
So, again, I'm sorry, I'm going to my.
I'm sorry.
The question I asked previously, are we getting rid of the competitive bidding process because the, the time constraints, I mean, if and when the need arises, we won't be able to actually.
If Grayson did go down and we need to bring the repair people in.
We need them.
We need them there yesterday as opposed to going through an RFP RFQ and signing all of the insurance documents that would come along with a new service provider. We aren't spending five, we hope we don't have to spend the five, but if, God forbid, we did, we would be able to make that happen immediately.
Especially during an earthquake. There's no other comments, I do have two cards. Two minutes, Mike Moehl. Mike Moehl, gone. Mary Zavos.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer my comments. I don't think I can make my point in two minutes.
Thank you. I have no other cards, is there a motion on 8E1?
Almost 8E1.
Is it second?
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing just for?
Before the second?
After the second.
Your second?
For Mr. Sananian's edification, the, the service providers that we do use that would be the continuation of this PO have already been vetted, they had gone through an RFP RFQ process. That's how we got to them right now. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right, next, please.
Under hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development regarding amendments to titles 2, 4, 5, 8, 10, 12, 15, 16, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 related to miscellaneous revisions and minor cleanups. At 9A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Mr. Choa.
We'll have a brief overview of these recommended cleanup and change items. Chris Bedikey, one of our planners, will be giving you the presentation. Chris?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'll open the public hearing right ahead.
Yes, good evening, council members and Mayor Weaver. This is, this item is miscellaneous amendments primarily to the zoning code and some other titles.
Now, we've seen all this before, so you're going to go into a lot of detail?
I'm not going to go through a lot of detail, but a brief background.
Next slide.
It is kind of big.
Next, six slides.
Oh, okay. Proceed.
Okay. So, this is primarily amendments, some policy and others, cleanups to the zoning code and to some other titles where there were recently some title changes, and we've gone through the municipal code to fix those title changes and some other things like that. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission back in May, and the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council approval of the amendment, and the Planning Commission made one recommendation, one comment that we've incorporated in the draft ordinance. If I can go over the slides.
The slide advanced.
Thank you. Okay, so there are policy changes in this amendment codifying zoning interpretations, codifying existing practices, correction of inconsistencies, errors, and titles. The titles relate to department titles, personnel titles, and so on. Policy changes of billiards. Recently, billiards became a permitted use in the DSP zone. In the commercial zones, the billiards remained as a conditional use permit use. This amendment makes billiards a permitted use in the commercial zones, consistent with the recent DSP changes. Rooftop equipment in single-family zones, we've had a zoning code interpretation that we've been implementing to allow replacement of rooftop equipment in single-family zones, existing rooftop equipment permitted to be installed on the roof. Since there's the existing ductwork and the installation, as long as the new unit is of the same size as the existing unit, we've allowed replacement. This would codify that practice. Planning entitlements, planning entitlements like conditional use permits, variances, design review approvals, have a shelf life of two years. After that, before expiration, an applicant can request an extension of one year. That extension has to go before the approving body and subject to findings. This process, streamlines the process since typically neighborhood conditions don't change that much. This amendment would grant the authority of approving entitlement extensions to the Director of Community Development and still subject to making findings that neighborhood conditions have not substantially changed. Administrative exceptions, there's a category in administrative exceptions for single-family, for single-family houses in single-family zones where there is no pitch roof to allow a rooftop, the installation of rooftop equipment. The definition of flat roof was not defined. This amendment would put a definition for what a flat roof is to prevent controversy. And the second item in administrative exceptions, recently, about a year ago or two, the council adopted a category in administrative exceptions to allow a 10% deviation from various numeric standards in the zoning code. Specifically, floor area ratio and parking count was excluded from the 10% deviation request. This amendment would extend the 10% deviation to the number of parking spaces, but not to floor area ratio. And the second item on this slide.
Is that throughout the city or that's only in the?
Throughout the city.
So, before an administrator, an applicant can ask for 10% instead of 100 spaces, ask for 90 spaces, and that can be approved by the administrator?
That may be approved by the administrator with the appropriate findings being made right now. Yes.
I'm not crazy about that, but we'll get to that, I don't want to interrupt you.
I can, well, okay, and I can just say that, that, that will replace the variance process that right now people apply for and always get.
And?
Always get?
Because usually these are in cases where it is really justified, but up to 10% is not really that many. Usually they are very, very negligible. And then we're talking about making adjustments for a change of use sometimes that in an existing building, and then the parking becomes an obstacle, and this is what we usually have to deal with.
Does this follow the cleanup section of, of what we're doing or the minor corrections?
This is part of the policy change.
This is one of the minor corrections.
Continue.
Okay. The next item on this page, non-conforming buildings. This relates to voluntary demolition of non-conforming buildings. There's a set percentage of demolition, voluntary demolition of exterior walls or roof, sometimes windows. This clarifies how windows and doors are supposed to be treated as part of that, of the 50% allocated towards the voluntary demolition. The next item, parking computation for outdoor dining areas. This is a policy change and also based on a zoning interpretation. As long as, for outdoor dining areas, as long as they were uncovered, parking was not charged against those areas. And this clarifies when outdoor dining areas enhance the pedestrian experience, which means outdoor dining areas are open and readily visible from the public sidewalk, parking is not charged against those outdoor dining areas. The Planning Commission has had a comment about this, and it's related to any landscaping that could potentially obscure the outdoor dining area from the sidewalk, and the Planning Commission set a certain limit for any landscaping. The next item is sign programs, and this is a policy change. Sign programs typically, when a sign program, it, it comes in as an application, typically the focus on the applicant's part is to get it through the process as quickly as possible. And sign programs focus on font and sign colors. Over time, these sign programs don't anticipate changes to the businesses and changes to tenant spaces. And when over time tenants change, the color spectrum and the fonts that have been approved in sign programs typically become an issue, and we are precluded from regulating color and, and fonts as it relates to trademarks. So basically, this amendment is to limit sign programs to certain, to only certain types of signs and criteria, such as location of the signs on the buildings or on the property, the construction type of the sign, let's say can sign versus channel letters or painted signs, and the method of illumination. And we thought these are the most prominent features that should be regulated in a sign program and not every other aspect of signs. So, the Planning Commission looked at this, and then they were okay with the concept. So this is incorporated in the draft ordinance now. The other thing that this does is grants the authority for review to the Director of Community Development instead of the Design Review Board or the City Council. So this is also part of streamlining the review process. What this does also, in addition to what I've just described, for any modifications of existing sign programs or any modifications of new sign programs that would be approved by the director, any modifications would be reviewed and approved by the Director of Community Development. It's still subject to making the required findings, which is in the Design Review Chapter, but it streamlines the, the overall process. Next, miscellaneous changes, and these are what I referred to initially, changes to titles and department names, like the Director of Community Planning has superseded now the Director of Community, I'm, I'm sorry, the Director of Community Planning has been superseded now by the Director of Community Development title. And the next item, changes to noticing requirements for consistency. Recently, noticing requirements were changed to incorporate noticing of occupants in addition to property owners. There were some areas of the code where this was not done, and this extends that same noticing requirement to all the other areas of the municipal code. There were some change, some, some, some locations where the radius for notification was still the old radius of 300 feet.
300, and you moved it to 500.
So we moved all those to 500 feet to make everything consistent. Questions and answers?
Questions, anybody?
Yeah.
Mr.?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The point and the revision regarding the 10% variance now being under the discretion of the hearing officer is located where in my material?
Yes.
I don't see that in the discussion. I don't see that in the actual examples.
I read it.
Page, page six?
Okay, in the ordinance, it's on page 116.
I thought I saw it in the report.
The section would be 30.44.020, and it's on page six of the staff report, the reference to it.
I thought I read it.
Allowing.
It's towards, at the bottom of the page, page six.
30.44.020 is what the staff report references. But it, it is in the report.
How is this generated? I mean, this is, I mean, I think, I think this is something rather significant.
Yes.
I don't, I definitely do not see this as a, let's see, how do we describe this? As miscellaneous revision and minor cleanups. Okay, I see this as a significant issue because parking in this city and lack thereof throughout the city is a significant issue, and I would prefer that this not be buried on page six, .30, .44, .020, giving the authority for that administratively to a hearing officer. I think that's something the council should at least be made aware of and weigh in on, so.
And that's why we bring it up as part of the staff presentation versus just this.
I'm against that. I don't think that should be delegated to a hearing officer. I think that's something that should come, should be given more attention and more administrative process and, what do we call it, the legislative process than most anything else that we do. I mean, this is an issue that faces us day in, day out, affects our quality of life. Not that I discount the wisdom and discretion of a hearing officer, but when things go sour, it comes up to us. We're the ones who get, you know, the mud on our faces, and I want to make sure that if that decision is being made, I want to save the hearing officer from the wrath of either a city manager or the city council saying, how could you approve that? I want it to come to us on council in some way, shape, or form.
Well, as a matter of practical application, how does the process work right now?
Right now, this is, I, I goes back to the original question, Mr. Najarian, that you asked, which is where is this coming from? Everything that we put in front of you comes from our, you know, once we come, once every six months or a year, we come back with a number of these lists, list of things to change based on our day-to-day practice. One of the things that we confront all the time is people are trying to recycle existing commercial buildings into new uses, and sometimes they have broken down the tenant spaces. And oftentimes, the, the one obstacle that comes to place is the number of parking spaces that are available to them and the way that they break down the spaces. And because the code is so strict in its interpretation, we always have to send them back to apply for either a parking reduction permit or a parking use permit oftentimes to come and, and do this. Usually, they spend several thousands of dollars to apply for a parking reduction permit with an, with a rationale for why they think the strict interpretation of the code in that case does not apply. And often, we never process those unless they make sense, and, and we never encourage the applicants to apply for those unless they make sense. Oftentimes, it's just a matter of practicality in making sure that the existing buildings can be recycled and economic development continues, and usually these are just technical interpretations of the words in the code that caused this. So, several years ago, we came and asked if you would authorize staff to allow up to 10% of numeric standards, but at that point, we didn't bring in parking because we were still not sure if that was still applicable. But over and again, after we've sent people through either a parking exception process through, in the redevelopment areas, or a parking reduction permit at a cost of thousands of dollars, in the other areas, we've discovered that they only happen occasionally and not all the time, and only when they make sense is when we are actually going to approve, to recommend approval, and we would not approve these willy-nilly. We will only approve them if they make sense to, to be a customer service to the, to the applicants.
Can they be appealed?
They can always be appealed.
And do we notice to the 500-foot radius?
We do notice to the 500.
For the people being directly impacted.
Exactly, we would.
How much does it cost to appeal it?
The appeal process right now is about $500.
It's a little more.
It's a little more than that. It's close, it's close to $1,000.
It's closer to $1,000.
I can appreciate the concern for the cost for the applicant, who would otherwise have to go through a variance, but those who wish to appeal it are also faced with a cost. So.
And that's why I think this is characterized as a policy change for the council. If this is something, based on what we hear from the business community, or just from applicants in general, is that it's, it's sometimes difficult and it's often expensive to do business, especially with some of the more Byzantine elements of our code, then we seek to find ways to shave off those rough edges and make it a little more streamlined, knowing that there is a safeguard in the, in the appeal process for the neighbors. If council does not wish to go down this road, we cannot go down this road. But ultimately, as we look to streamline that business process, this is just another manifestation of that.
Mr. Choa, Mr. Garcia, I think we're all in agreement on everything but this one. Can we close the public hearing, I close the public hearing. Can we have a motion on everything with the exclusion of that one section, then vote on that one section separately?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what you could do, it's an ordinance, so it'll be introduced tonight, whoever introduces it could introduce it with that section or without it.
That's right. Only introduce. Okay, and then we could bring it back as two, that one separate.
Right.
Because I think Mr. Najarian's okay with everything else.
No. Or what we can do is, we can have it introduced, and then, if I may, Mr. Mayor, when it comes back to be, for adoption next week, or, yeah, next week, then Mr. Najarian or anybody on the council can make an amendment to amend this provision as has been drafted. If that passes, I mean, this is just another way to do it under Robert's rules.
Yeah.
If that passes, then that section will be removed. If it doesn't pass, then it will stay in the ordinance, and then the council could vote on the full ordinance.
Sorry, I missed was introduction of the ordinance.
Right.
So may I ask for next week to be segregated from all this in some manner, all the issues regarding parking? Because I know there's three or four of them in here, that's not the only one. One is the outdoor seating exemption for parking, one is this reduction from two to one, the ADA requirements. Please put that all aside to me because I feel that that is a critical issue that council needs to keep an eye on and be made, especially clear as to what we're voting on and what the implications are. And we can perhaps discuss that in greater depth next week, once we see the entire list of issues regarding parking.
Just for the record, I mean, well, one is, if you have any questions pertaining to those now, I mean, I think it would be helpful for staff to hear them specifically. But two, if, at the end of the discussion that the council has, if the council could introduce the ordinance and ask the staff to prepare just a summary of those issues that affect parking, then that way, the council can have the full discussion of them next week if.
If I may just answer the outdoors dining area, the practice has been that outdoor dining was not subject to any parking. What we're introducing is that, that practice will only continue if the outdoor dining is adjacent to the sidewalk and enhances the sidewalk activity, but outdoor dining that is not adjacent to sidewalk will be subject to parking. In that case, we're becoming more restrictive, not less than before.
Okay, let's separate those things out. Somebody want to introduce the ordinance?
Number one, I agree with some of Mr. Najarian's observations, and I think we need to look in more detail. But I will introduce the ordinance with the exception of.
The parking.
Of the parking exemption.
That'll be a separate one for us to further discuss next week. Is that okay? Good. Okay, thank you. The only comment I will make now or in the future, since I've been here 17 years, I've seen a planning department that was in ruins, too many problems. We now have a lot of confidence, Sir Ghani shop, high credibility, but a warning to the councils that will follow. Who knows when Mr. Ghani and others that are in the department now are so proficient are gone, that we maintain the same quality of service and credibility that we have now. It's just a warning. I won't be, none of us will be here, and they might come up, but you know what I mean.
You're referring to the hearing officers?
No, it's more than just that. Things over the years from late 90s, you know, we did things, I wonder why we did them, so, you know, I'd hate to see it go back to something like that, unless Mr. Choa doesn't hire the right people to replace him someday.
My guess is if I did, that I would not be here, sir.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I also want to commend Mr. Ghani for all of the good work, and the staff, all of the good work that he's done throughout the years since he's come around and seen definite improvement.
Sure has. Okay.
I love you too, Mr. Hassan, but I get these things, I, when I, I'm becoming very passionate about planning.
That's obvious. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited, time is not part of the agenda, each speaker has a lot of five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, for the appropriate department investigation or report.
First speaker, Mike Mohill, followed by Eva Conan, Conian, sorry, I'm butchering the name. I want to you, give the correct name when you come up.
Mayor Weaver, all your steps, we this, action item number eight E, are we, did you pull it?
We.
Or was it there and I was in the bathroom?
Yes, you were, you were not in the chambers. You had stuff out.
I wanted to speak on that one, but I guess my, missed my five, three, two minutes of, okay, so we'll start to go with oral communication. Thank you, my name is Mike Mohill, council members in the viewing audience, Mayor Weaver and council members, yes, police and firefighters' jobs are dangerous, but according to the Department of Labor statistics, their job is not listed as 10 most dangerous. Now, what I came to talk about, let's hear it from the 2013 Dog and Pony Show of Glendale Water and Power. For the past several weeks, our local utility company has been instructed by our city council to reach out to the community and explain how council and GWP were going to circumvent Proposition 26. Proposition 26 requires two-thirds voter approval when the city imposes any rate increases related to property rights. The proposed electric rate increase will be approximately 30% compounded over the next five years, and only on the kilowatts used, plus additional fixed cost. In addition, when the variable green fuel commodities added to the 30%, plus the fixed cost, the actual electrical rate increases can be 70% or more over the next five years. Also, from 2007 through 2015, water rates will have gone up 51%. With the reelection of council members Freeman and Najarian, with Mayor Weaver and standing councilman Kentaro, all are on board for the 2013 Glendale Water and Power Dog and Pony Show working its way around town. The GWP proposed electric rate increases in 2012 were postponed because council members Freeman and Najarian were up for reelection. Council members Freeman, Najarian, Kentaro, and Weaver are all beholden to the unions for pay-to-play politics. They have given these council members countless thousands of dollars in campaign money through the years for their continued support. Salary, for example, of a parking manager is $96,000. A retired police chief, Ron DePampa, just retired at age 57, with an annual lifetime pension of over $197,000 a year for life. And social security recipients' average income annually is less than $15,000. And if your name is Bill Gates and you contribute millions of dollars towards social security, all you're going to receive is $30,000. But we have the best employees that money can buy. As millions of dollars continue to be drained out of the GWP into the general fund to primarily pay for cities' workers' salaries, pensions, and benefits, council approved a $35 million bond last year, and another $60 million bond is being discussed now to keep the utility company afloat. During the April election, Glendale Police and Firefighters Association did what unions do best, getting out the vote for their candidates in order to receive as much salary, pensions, and benefits from the taxpayers as possible. The union-supported candidates were well-funded and well-organized compared to their challengers. At candidate forum and on campaign mailers, it was stated to the voters and local merchants, if they wanted to have their electric and water rates increased, fees and taxes increased, as well as new bonds, please, please, by all means, support and vote for their incumbent candidates. And the voters did. What recourse do the blinded voters have now? Nothing. Mission accomplished. Arti, would you please show my PowerPoint on the pension, on the, excuse me, on the campaign contributions? Here they are, folks, in 2009, 7/11, Kentaro, Najarian, Freeman, Draymond, and Weaver. Right now, in 2013, as of March 2013, the Mrs. Freeman that has received, is there another PowerPoint picture there, real quick link?
That's all there is.
Okay, about, she received about, as of right now, as of March, she received $12,000 from the unions, and Mr. Najarian runs, received about $8,000 as of March 2013. So ladies and gentlemen, the unions have made great investments in their council members. What this tells me is the public must get organized and fight the unions. Thank you, my name is Mike Mohill.
Does anybody want to comment?
Well, I do. I think what the public should do is get together and fight the misinformation.
Yeah.
That Mr. Mohill, day after day, week after week, month after month, the fact that it's year after year, is spewing from the podium. You know, Mr. Mohill, what I didn't do was go on Strong R Mom &amp; Pop shops to place your beautiful face in their front window, although I did receive many complaints from them, and they were afraid to take it down. They were afraid that you would make some sort of retribution against them. You were rejected by the voters. Maybe that's harsh. It wasn't you personally, it was your ideas and your concepts and your continual criticism, unfounded criticism against the council, city management, and the workers of this city. It was rejected. And not only did the voters reject you, the council rejects you, and city staff rejects you. It's an old story that is getting tiresome to hear, and it's wrong. It is 100% wrong. I'm sorry, Mr. Mohill, I'm sorry that you feel compelled to come up week after week and continue your diatribe.
Let me just clarify that, we have campaign contribution limits in the city. All that any individual or group can give is $1,000. So it's not possible for me or anyone else to have received $12,000 from unions, because we don't have 12 unions who could have each given $1,000. So I don't know where he's getting that number, but I believe, to be accurate, I received $1,000 from the GPOA, $1,000 from the GMA, $1,000 from the General Employees Association, which is $3,000, and I may, oh, and fire, probably another $1,000, make it $4,000. I might be missing someone, but that's, there's a big difference between that and $12,000.
Well, I'd have to go to LA and look at what the IBW and all the other major unions gave to their favorite mayoral candidate, millions of dollars. I wish Mr. Mohill and Mr. Milano and the rest would go down to LA and tell them the story. They were sure trying to buy campaigns. Every council candidate in LA was getting millions. It's just crazy, that we get picked on for X to nothing. Oh, well. But I do kind of get upset when these candidates or these gadflies get up, oh, activists, I guess that's the new term now, activists, get up and they take the highest-paid person in the department, like the police. Ron DePampa, who has been here 35, 37, 37 years, he's Glendale native, risen through the ranks, cleared to the top, head of the police department, makes a good salary, and he deserves the retirement. So that's the guy you pick, not the common officer on the street. Oh, no, no, wouldn't be worth saying that. Always pick the highest. Pick the fire chief, pick the city manager, pick any, or the highest paid in the department, and throw that up as, look what we're paying. They earned every penny. Countless hours they have to put in when you're the top dog, enormous. Just sad, 10 years of listening to this garbage continues on. Unbelievable. And now, young lady, from, I won't try to say your name again, Santa Carlotta, my best friend growing up lived on Santa Carlotta, just say your name for the record.
Arev Madkarian.
Okay.
Honorable mayor, city council members, city staff and public, my name is Arev Madkarian, and I'm an intern at ANCA Glendale. With all the global issues overwhelming us, it's hard to remember the little things in the city like littering. Trash is littering the environment and is becoming more and more prevalent as overpopulation increases. After new signs were unveiled around Glendale in April, Trail Safety Patrol volunteers have reported a successful decrease in litter. So I thank the officials of Glendale for taking the time to prevent further pollution. With the new humorous signs, people are attracted and persuaded that polluting is harmful and therefore should be stopped. The slightly grim humor catches, catches people's attention, and the bluntness pushes them to change their ways. It's the little steps like this that change the city for the better. Thank you.
Very nice.
Well said.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and staying until late and to say it. We're trying, we're trying very hard to make it a cleaner city. Next speaker, Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Harry Zavos.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Jennifer Pinkerton, president of the original Grand Central Neighborhood Association. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My neighborhood has a rather unique configuration. It dead ends at the 5 freeway and has only three points of entry. The outer streets of our neighborhood align with commercial entities, most of which are Disney buildings. All of our Grand Central Neighborhood streets are crowded by employees Monday through Friday, basically 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. Even though the Disney real estate director has informed me that the new Disney garage offers free parking for vendors, contractors, employees alike, and has excess, excuse me, and has excess capacity, our neighborhood is a de facto parking lot for area businesses. And this problem only worsened when 1,500 to 2,000 new employees began working in the area last fall. The Grand Central Neighborhood now has some parking restrictions. We have a 9:00 to 6:00 permit parking zone on one side of one street, but that has been designated by your parking office as a pilot project. Two other streets have two-hour parking restrictions on one side of each street. And if I understood the parking office correctly, that is all we are technically eligible for is two-hour parking restrictions. However, these restrictions have proven inadequate for ensuring that residents have priority for street parking. We have, most houses in our neighborhood have multiple cars, and some of them have multiple generations, so, living in one home. So street parking is essential for the residents of that neighborhood, but the employees parking there are basically crowding out our opportunity to park. We have no choice about where to park, they have other options, we do not. A few months ago, if I understood correctly from the Glendale News Press article, this council voted to lower the percentage of residents who must sign a permit parking petition from 77% to 66% for a neighborhood adjacent to an auto dealership or multiple dealerships because employee parking in those neighborhoods was problematic. So I'm here tonight to request that A, that our neighborhood be deemed eligible for 9:00 to 6:00 permit parking, not just the two-hour restrictions. I'm also asking whether we could be deemed eligible to obtain the lowered threshold that this other neighborhood obtained. And if you agree with both those requests, how do we proceed from here? Thank you.
I think, doesn't that apply citywide, the lower percentage?
Mr. Mayor, no, the ordinance that was established and passed by city council was for special district and South Brand.
Hmm, I forgot.
I missed, which neighborhood are we?
Out, west Glendale, where the Disney project is being built.
Can staff sit down?
Can staff sit down with Ms. Pinkerton and explore some, some more solutions?
Sure.
Because it sounds like what they have is not working.
Absolutely.
And also, you know, I had spoken to Disney, to their traffic, their transportation people, and they were going to do some research with their employees and more outreach. Could someone follow up with them? It's the, whoever's on the TMI. And let's see if they've done that, and see if Disney can, can do some work with their employees and their vendors, something more meaningful.
They can do it. Okay, staff's taking notes. They'll be in touch with you. Okay, last speaker, Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. By June 25, 2013, resolution that cited the charter, you transferred nearly $21 million of GWP electric receipts to pay for general appropriations, to pay for services unrelated to electricity, such as fire, parks, libraries, and the like. Could I have my slide? And could you leave it up until my remarks are completed? The quotation you see on the screen, excluding the bracketed, uh, bracketed words in red, are words that actually appear in section, except for the words, red words bracketed in red, is a quotation from that resolution. The bracketed words in red are words that actually appear in Section 22, Article 11, and which are omitted from the resolution. I invite anybody watching to check the charter for themselves to see if I am making a correct statement. Let me read that quotation, including the omitted charter words. Section 21, Article 11 of the city charter, provides an amount equal to 25% of the operating revenues of the Glendale Water and Power Department shall be transferred from Glendale Water and Power Surplus Fund to the Reserve Fund. Omitting the charter's surplus reference conceals the fact that transfers must only come from surplus, namely, from money left over, if any, once all utility needs, needs are met. That's why it's called the GWP Surplus Fund. Transfers under the charter cannot exceed the amount of surplus monies in the surplus fund. And if there is a surplus, only a portion of that surplus can be transferred, a portion measured in terms of 25% of utilities' operating revenues. GWP documents supporting proposed rate increases state that current, and without those increases, projected electric net income is in deficit. Transferring in the absence of surpluses and in the face of deficits violates the language of the charter. Omitting the Reserve Fund reference conceals that the city violates the charter by failing to direct transfers to the General Reserve Fund. This fund, like all the funds to which I've referred, is established by the charter as a distinct fund and cannot be modified by accounting conventions. And it's established primarily to advance cash temporarily to other funds, not to pay for general appropriations. Instead of transferring to this fund, as the charter mandates, Glendale instead transfers to the fund established by Article 11, Section 14, to pay for general appropriations. And it does so even though Section 14 expressly precludes GWP receipts from going there. I invite anybody watching to check and compare for themselves Section 14 with Section 15. Counsel, your resolution may have been drafted to comport with city practice, but neither comports with the express language of the charter. I see I have a few seconds left, and let me just indicate that statements have been made from this dais, that isn't it wonderful that we really have two pockets in the same trousers? We have the utility and the general fund. If we got a lot of money in one pocket, shouldn't be bad to transfer it to another pocket. At least the documents distributed by GWP indicate that there's a dire need for a rate increase precisely because that pocket that represents the utility isn't full of surplus monies. It's in dire need. And with my final, final seconds, Ms. Freeman, I just want to say that I hope your two weeks is an auspicious beginning to a lifetime of mutual enrichment among three persons.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards. Who's next, please?
Next, is there any new business?
No, no new business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I can't.
We are adjourned at 8:00.